And I'll call the meeting to order, uh, thank all of you folks for being here tonight. We'll, uh, try and get through business as quickly as we can tonight. It's just gonna be a couple of hours, let you get on your way home. Uh, I'll call on Commissioner Langston to, uh, have our invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the many blessings that we have, Lord. We're thankful for, for being able to live in this county. We're thankful, Lord, that, that you show us that we have, that we have a great county. And, Lord, we want, we want you to continue to bless our, uh, our residents. Bless this commission, Lord, help us to make the right decisions for our residents and keep our, keep our armed forces safe, Lord, that they can continue to fight and continue to, to ensure that we have the freedom to do this. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Uh, tonight, uh, I'd like to call on Lou Smith, who's a United States, uh, Air Force veteran, and, uh, she will lead us into place of leisure. Smith?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like now, uh, first item is the minutes from the February the third meeting. Do I have a motion for approval? Got a motion for approval? Do I have a second? Motion for second discussion. All right, all in favor, see if I've already raised my hand. Motion carries. Next appearance, citizens, uh, Scott Boyd.
Scott Boyd, 14126, Highway 116.
What you got for us tonight, Scott?
I thought you had something to say.
I'm going to, uh, put off any discussion on traffic issues, uh, DOT issues, because, uh, we have had that meeting, uh, it's got a special place on the, uh, so we will discuss them later on in the meeting.
That's all there, so that's what they're saying.
We will do that. Uh, as far as, um, as far as, as the issue, uh, I guess, I will bring up the drainage dishes first, because it's a little bit different. Uh, that has been looked at. Ms. Juning and I met with, uh, the district engineer, Thomas Howell, and with Sam Welborn, uh, for a second time with Mr. Welborn. Um, they've looked at the situation, they've got, got a few questions or concerns and suggestions. Uh, I would say, and Martha, correct me if, if I'm wrong, but I think the drain, the first drainage ditch, the one, the western, westernmost drainage ditch, which is the one that's closer to the water tower, I don't think there's anything they're gonna be able to do with that one. Uh, the, the other one, uh, there is a possibility, uh, we're gonna talk to, uh, plant management out there, see, see whether, uh, they might consider some things. Uh, and then, a couple of those have to do with additional holding ponds or whatnot to, to ease the flow. Uh, that area, we still not sure, the area that was hit behind the tape for a while, they had some flag, utility flags out there, that's a possibility of doing something there to help it, but we're gonna talk to them and, and address that issue. We will still be proceeding. Greg, I don't know whether you've gotten anything accomplished yet on additional testing. I think we're still kinda waiting to get the material safety data.
They have asked. I asked them for that, then I had, uh, Monty asking for that, and still haven't gotten it.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, um, if the next step is to go to LJ, they don't operate, or to go to the G, that we need to have that information and something else, perhaps, for response.
Okay. If we don't have that, uh, I mean, you should be having a meeting with them soon, so...
I've reflected that they've set up a time for us to have that, that.
Okay. All right.
Now, as far as the first ditch, the first color you're talking about, they didn't see anything that they could do. Now, that's one, that one is worse than the other one, as far as contaminants, because I've seen more kill coming from that one. They don't, that one comes into my, directly into my fashion. I mean, I've seen three or four different kills in the last year.
And it grows back thicker, though.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if something going on there, come in front of that side, and, you know, I look at all the, oh, one big parking lot, they need to address that one, too. They don't need to let that address this one.
Mm-hmm.
They're not solving the problem. If they just take care of trying to do something with this one, that's not solving. They gotta take care of that one, too.
Okay. All right.
But, and another thing I want to mention, the, uh, the trash has gotten a little worse with all this wind and stuff we've had lately.
Yeah.
It's getting pretty rough down there, and the whole front out there, it's everywhere. And what I was gonna mention, I didn't mention it last week, but I rode over to the business to the plant, just, I didn't go in and try to talk to nobody, I was just going for curiosity, different, I stopped at different points around it.
Mm-hmm.
You don't smell nothing, you don't hear nothing, you don't even know it's there until you drive along.
Yeah, I've driven around it before, too.
And they got a neighborhood, a whole neighborhood, it's just a road width away from it, on one side. I was in that area, and like, it, you hardly hear it. So, with that being said, I know they can do something.
But were you there during the cleaning shift?
Well, I don't know how many shifts they run, but I, well, you hear the boy out front, he drives up the parking lot, he's sitting right there, too, and that was the noisiest thing there, but like I said, you gotta be in a parking lot here.
Okay.
And they got it down on trailers, so. It was just interesting, and they got monitoring sites all around, everywhere I stop, you know, like, they monitored the waters of these sites, inside the road, it's just interesting, you know, to note all those things, so. I just feel it can be a whole lot better to, to walk in there.
What is the status of that plant?
That I could tell you, it is smaller, though.
It's a smaller plant. They just did a, announced a huge expansion of the plant over in, uh, Duaneville.
But, uh, how long will it be before we know anything about what we're gonna talk about later on, before anything gets started with DOT or whoever?
Somebody will start real quick.
Real quick.
Yeah, and I, I understand what you're saying, I think, uh, we should very shortly be having another meeting with them, to say...
How's this one, Johnny, inviting the colors? With DOT, my feelings are really hurt, you know that much.
I'm sorry, I didn't tell you your feelings, guys.
I know they are, are.
Okay.
I suppose so.
Thank you. All right, uh, next item is, uh...
Mr. Chairman, we have one person signed up, we've signed up for item number five.
For item number five.
Traffic issue.
Okay, all right. Who is that?
Bobby.
Bobby, okay. All right.
I reserve, I may have one last question.
Well, why don't we wait, since we're gonna discuss the traffic issues then, Bobby, we'll, we'll make sure you get to speak then, when we talk about the traffic issues at the plant.
I reserve, I may have one last question.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, that's fine. Uh, next item is the, uh, decision on Key LLC to rezone, uh, fifty-four point three four three acres of land lots, uh, ninety-eight and one twenty-seven, Land District Eighteen, map O eighty-four, parcel one twelve A from A-one to R-one, residential, it's hard to pronounce, single-family housing, uh, so, you know, Key Road and Waverly Hall. Uh, we had the public hearing last time, uh, there were no, no, uh, people that wished to speak for or against it, uh, and the advocate, uh, apparently misunderstood what it was, uh, and I think he showed up the next night, so, but anyway, uh, we have, uh, we will not have a public hearing, and as I understand it, John, there is a, uh, the only thing we're gonna do tonight is vote.
Yes, that's...
But there was a, a legal issue that, that we have discussed on that.
Yeah, we need to, I wanna kinda address a little bit, uh...
Please.
...here tonight. The, of course, the, the fact that somebody does or does not show up for a, uh, a zoning, a zoning does not mean it fails, uh, unless the, there are six conditions, I think, that, uh, you always look at that are provided for in the law. Uh, if, if those conditions are met, then of course, then, uh, or then, then it should be rezoned, uh, or if they're, uh, or, uh, they're not met, then, uh, it shouldn't be rezoned, so that's, that will be the sole issue. But tonight, I would, there are two, uh, three zoning conditions that I would recommend to you. Uh, there is a, an issue, and it had been an ongoing issue, that part of Avery Lane was not dedicated to the public, uh, and it's, uh, and, and, uh, some people won't do it, but it's open, there were some, some, uh, building permits issued on it, and, uh, and then all of a sudden, uh, then, then, you know, they got the houses completed and now people occupy them, and so I, in order to keep this from happening, and if you notice this piece of property is contiguous with Avery Lane, and it's, that portion of Avery Lane is a, is a private, uh, or is not a public road, and you can't, uh, have, you know, uh, can't, you're, you're prohibited, uh, the creation of a public road that connects into a, you know, into a private road that connects back into a public road. But, uh, I would, would suggest that, that until Avery Lane, uh, problem is straightened out and, uh, it gets dedicated, that you would consider, uh, th- three possible zoning conditions. One, no building permits will be, or certificates of occupancy will be issued for any house or lot that fronts on Avery Lane, unless Avery Lane is a dedicated public road, uh, constructed to county standards and then accepted by the county. Uh, that'll keep somebody from coming in and, and building houses in front of, on Avery Lane, which is a private road, uh, and then us putting, allowing a public road to get into the private road, and, uh, so, that would be one. Another one you may wanna consider, uh, and there, uh, and I realize that, that one thing we wanna do, and our planning department wants to do, and, uh, and Tracy's, make sure we got connectivity of all roads, so that we don't have, you know, roads to stop somewhere, and, but, uh, what, uh, I would suggest that we, that you do is consider a zoning condition, that no subdivision road, uh, within Avery, uh, within this, this key, uh, property, I don't know what they're gonna call it, but no road is constructed in that subdivision would connect to Avery Lane unless Avery Lane is, uh, is a dedicated public road constructed to county standards and accepted. So, you know, it could go right up to it and be barricaded, but, uh, once Avery Lane becomes dedicated, it, you know, connect up and you would have public road coming in through this property connecting to Avery Lane, which is a public road which connects back to the Key Road.
Can I interrupt just a second?
Yeah.
Along those same lines, we don't know about the connectivity, and I know that Commissioner Woods expressed his issue about having subdivisions with more than twenty-five homes in them without having multiple exits. Should we not be conditioning perhaps a master plan so we know what the flow through that area is gonna be?
Yeah, we can, if you wish, you could, uh, ask of, you know, a, uh, two, two, uh, two entrances, uh, to the subdivision coming off of, or from the Key Road, you know, I guess there's enough road fronts to do that.
Well, they would have to be then connected.
Yeah.
And without a master plan, um, how are you gonna establish that connectivity, my issue?
Right. And then the third, the third one you consider, and, and, and maybe this is just, uh, as pilot known, but, uh, that, for that property, uh, which you're going to rezone, or you're gonna consider zoning, that fronts on Avery Lane, that there'll be a one-hundred-foot unstruck buffer, uh, uh, along Avery Lane, uh, unless Avery Lane is dedicated as a public road. And that way it'll keep people from building houses, you know, in, in, I'm just trying to plug up all the holes, uh, that have, uh, we've seen develop and already used in the past to get around some of our, our road regulations. But other than those three, you know, the, the, there were no other zoning conditions suggested by the, uh, planning commission or our zoning staff.
What is the condition of Avery Road as it's shown on this plant?
That part of it, I understand, is, is just, is a private road.
It's all private, because it would be a private, wait, you know, where it touches the Key Road, oh, okay.
Just, you know, just that first part of, near, the, the, the Key Road, I believe.
So, th- this part is paid, do you need?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Can't be turned over, is it, uh, touch a public road?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, those are the only three issues that I have, but it's, it's up to the commission, you know, there's been no opposition at, uh, at the planning commission, uh, no opposition here, um, for you, uh, or the other.
And it would seem that, that, uh, that, and your staff did not find any, any reason to put any zoning conditions on and recommends approval.
All right, um, I guess at this point in time, unless we got any, we can certainly have questions to tailor afterwards, but I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we accept those three, but that, we, we accept the three recommendations and I carry returning, and also ask for master plan.
I have been a motion to, for approval with the three conditions that you can give us the verbiage for later.
And their master plan, so...
Master plan, please. Are you asking for a master plan with the two, uh, egresses, egress, egresses?
The, the point is, you know, they can come in and do twenty houses here, twenty houses here, and then you do have subdivision that exceeds that limitation, so you don't want to let, by doing it segments circumvent what is an issue of public safety. And if you have a master plan, then you're gonna know where your interconnectivity is, staff will have a better idea where things are going.
I, I was just suggesting that, that it showed the egress, egress and egresses based upon the fact that now they know what we want and expect.
And perhaps connectivity between the different segments if you want to develop it, yes, they have.
When would the master plan be required? Before the final plat of this section?
Yeah.
I would think...
Certainly before the final plat, so that it can be approved by...
You know, and a piece this size, I think it is wise to look at it, because you've got, you know, you don't want school buses coming in, into a subdivision like this, having to go back out on, on the main road, come back in, you know, with one, one to the other, and I think that's what Tracy was concerned about, too, is that, you know, be able to, be able to, one road connect to another, but, yet on the other hand, too, we can't have one, you know, uh, two public roads and then a, a private road in the middle.
Yeah. I second your motion. All right, second, Commissioner Niderfeld, so it's for approval, the three conditions that Mr. Taylor mentioned, plus a master plan, that...
Before the final plat.
Uh, okay, before the final plat.
I would, um, have the master plan come in with the preliminary plat, because the preliminary's been broken in the design contract.
So, with preliminary, okay. Thank you. And, you know, that, since that area is so built up in there, this is just kind of the next move, I, I think certainly the two, two entrances, uh, to the main road anyway, somehow, should be a part of it. Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, see if I've raised my hand? Motion carries. Okay, good. Next item is the, uh, financial statement for December of two thousand and fourteen. Entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Motion for approval, that was second. Second, discussion. All in favor, see if I've raised my hand? Motion carries. Next item then is, uh, traffic issues. Uh, now, there were several issues, and I will just very quickly state them. The first issue was where three fifty-four on the east side of the rock bridge, where three fifty-four makes the ninety-degree turn, comes down that fairly steep hill. Uh, had a couple, just a couple over the last twenty years or so get hung up there and require assistance to get loose. Uh, if someone is coming out of three fifty-four the other direction, it's certainly a problem for the trucks to make a turn, uh, and you can look at it and see all sorts of scrapes where the trucks that have tried to cut that short, uh, have, haven't been able to make it without gouging the road. That was issue number one. Issue number two is where three fifty-four runs into one sixteen, right there in Pine Mountain Valley. Uh, some trucks have, if they take the, the little curvature going toward the plant, take that little, little ramp curvature on the one sixteen, some trucks have scraped there. Other trucks have not, or claim they have not seen the sign in time to turn left at that, at the chicken plant, so they go, to go to the chicken plant, so they go right, and when they go right, they have to swing wide, they go through the, uh, the deer processing, uh, either, used to go through their parking lot or else through the grass shoulder surrounding it, have torn that up, uh, wooden barricades were put up to tore that up, and then they started turning down the, uh, the road beside the, uh, auto detailing, uh, plant, uh, not detailing, but, uh, the auto shop there, actually coming through his driveway sometimes at rather high speeds, uh, have actually cracked his concrete driveway on a couple of occasions, uh, so, that's, all of that is tied in there. And the third area was right out here at, uh, one sixteen and twenty-seven, had a couple of accidents there where the trucks would either come back as they getting ready to start, drifted back a little bit and a car pulled up behind them. Uh, we certainly have traffic jams there because the trucks have to pull wide and make the turn when they're gonna go head north on twenty-seven. Apparently, there, there haven't been really any problems with the trucks coming, that come one sixteen from the interstate and then come through Hamilton, other than the two traffic lights. However, what DOT is, is said, uh, said they will do, uh, as far as this last one here, they're gonna put stop bars thirty, forty feet, whatever they decide, back from the traffic line, uh, both on twenty-seven, uh, on the north side of twenty-seven, and on one sixteen. That will, one, one negative with that, perhaps, is that it takes away the right turn on red, because you won't be up at the intersection. But what it does do is allow the trucks room to make that swing without blocking up traffic going in all three directions. So, and they're going to do that very quickly. Uh, I don't have the time, but they said they're gonna move right ahead on that. Uh, and, yeah, if you pull up behind one of those too close, that's, that's still not gonna correct that problem on, on the hill, but, uh, at least it should, uh, take away the traffic jams that have occurred there, uh, and with the wide turning radiuses. Uh, as far as where three fifty-four hits one sixteen, right there at Pine Mountain Valley, they are to very quickly, uh, put up a sign that points to the chicken plant that says chicken plant, so there won't be any wrong turns made there. That will be an interim measure while we discuss, and that's what we're gonna do, uh, in, in, right now, is three fifty-four, uh, the state is willing for the county to take that back, it's roughly two and a half miles in there. Uh, I think, though, however, they would probably want us to take it back up to the rock bridge, because, uh, there's some, another access for one ninety going across the mountain, could access there, that. Uh, but they are willing to, to let us do that, we don't have anything in writing from them yet, but if, if we say we want to take that over, uh, they would allow us to do that. If we took it over, we can post that road for no truck traffic. The DOT cannot post a road, no truck traffic, they can put weight limits on it, but they cannot post it, no truck traffic. Now, the folks at Cook Foods, I, as I understand it, most of the problem, if not all of it, is from the refrigerated trucks that, uh, that are going to pick up the final processed chicken. Uh, Cook Foods has been handing out flyers, how much, or how often they've been doing that, I don't know, but we're handing out flyers, asking those truck drivers not to go that route because of the problems it's caused. And then, we did have, uh, Mr. York, our, uh, public road supervisor, go out and look at that road, uh, it was resurfaced probably about five to seven years ago, uh, that portion of three fifty-four, it's in pretty good shape, except for where the trucks drag along the mountain. Uh, Mr. York was of the opinion that, that he, he thought for maybe fifteen thousand or so, we could take away that steep drop, and I have, I just heard that from him yesterday afternoon, uh, by, you know, putting that up, putting a lot of, of under, uh, you know, good base underneath that, but, uh, that's, that's still a mighty sharp curve, uh, mighty sharp turn, so. And now, I don't know what the effect is, Greg, on the, uh, it's certainly two and a half miles wouldn't be a big effect, but on the, uh, Elme...
It add a little bit, yeah, a couple hundred dollars base are, are allotment, but, um, my kind of argument to, to raising that turn is, then you, you, you encourage people to try and take it at a higher speed, I'd rather keep it, it's more of a challenge to keep, because then you create other problems. So, you solve one problem, create another.
I think the real problem with the people turning there, if there's a car that is coming out, uh, or heading north on three fifty-four, the trucks can't swing wide to make that turn, and that's when they run off that, that real steep drop-off area and catch, but, I mean, it, that's, that's one way of doing it. So, I don't know, we, uh, I just thought I would open that up for discussion tonight, uh, with the board of commissioners, and see what, what y'all thought. Martha, do you wanna add anything to that?
Well, we did ask them if the GPS companies could just delete that road, uh, from some of their maps, as far as what truck businesses know that there's some roads that have been dead ends for years and years and years, because interstate, I- eighty-five went through, you know, they had to block the road on each side, and it still directs trucks there, so that's a great example of why that would not work. And they did say that on the south end of, of three fifty-four, that, you know, it would be a pretty good little project, that they could resolve the problems there, so the main problem appears to be on the north end, uh, and DOT did not act like they wanted to touch that at all, and when, when you actually stop there and look to see how high it is on one side and how it really drop off on the other, it's pretty daunting, I would think, just a bit intimidating, they, they did more attack that, I would think, um, from just a bit intimidating, they, they did want to tackle it, I would think, from, you know, as, as far as their handling it, but the road itself did seem to be in good condition, it looked like, you know, much maintenance would be needed for a long period of time.
Well, if you keep the trucks up, and that's gonna extend the life.
Exactly, yeah.
If you were to take, uh, to close truck traffic, that road, enforcement's gonna be.
It is, and I have talked to Sheriff Jolly, and he indicated that he would enforce it, we, we put that up there, and he said it wouldn't take long for, with him enforcing it, just a few tickets, word would get around to those truck drivers. That's about all I can do with, with the sheriff at this point, though.
Do we have any idea what the, what the ticket price would be?
No, I don't.
Or that, or us?
No, they'll be up to the judge.
It'd be a county, it'd be a county ordinance, so.
It'd be, yeah.
So, I, I guess it would be up to a thousand dollars and six months in jail, that's the max you can do, per offense.
Maybe meat chicken the whole time.
Yeah. Better than crow.
But I don't, I, 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 go ahead, Charlie.
And fifty thousand dollars you're talking about, that's just to, to decrease that slope.
Yeah.
And, Greg was saying that we might not wanna spend that anyway, because there are potential other problems, speeding.
It might, and I'm not sure, we, that's a pretty steep slope, and Mr. York's general, he's pretty sharp, and I trust what he says, but I'm not sure.